The House will come to order. Messages from the Senate.
Message from the Senate, this is the David's motion. Mr. Speaker, hereby announced, the passage by the Senate of the following House file, here with return as amended by the Senate, in which amendments are concurrence to the House as respectfully requested. House File Number One, an act relating to the financing operation of state and local government. David's moves that the House concur on the Senate amendments to House File Number One, and that the bill be repassed as amended by the Senate.
Recognize the member from Fillmore, Representative Davids, who will explain the Senate amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. There is one amendment, and that amendment was a Dietzick amendment over in the Senate that would allow special closing times for the 2018 Super Bowl. What it does, it allows 4:00 AM closings for, I believe, three days, and it's optional. It's statewide, but it's optional. They don't have to be open, but they have that option to be open. And, members, I neglected something during the tax bill debate. I forgot to thank you. You shouldn't be doing that. Mr. Steven Rubus is the committee administrator, who really, really worked very, very hard to put this tax bill together, so I would like to thank him for the record. Now, this bill passed out 102 to 31, and I've had some members of the 31 that have come to me feeling bad for not voting for the tax bill. So, you know, guilt is a powerful thing. Now, to relieve that guilt, you can vote yesterday, and let's put about 134 green ones up there. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Any discussion on the Senate amendments? Representative Mark Ward.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker and members, and I rise to support the motion to concur. This is the only change that was made in a very good bipartisan tax cut bill.
Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion to concur with the Senate amendment say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. The clerk will give the bill its third reading as amended by Senate.
Third reading, House File Number One, as amended by the Senate.
Any further discussion? The clerk will close the roll. There being 95 ayes and 29 nays, the bill is repassed as amended by Senate and its title agreed to.[1733.04][1733.04](Clerk claps) Just wait.
Just wait.
Thanks, Doc.
No.
Does it count if you're to say?
Congratulations on the day.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Now.
I'm going to call her.
Yeah.
For that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, it's a little...
She says.
Never seen one of them.
Right now.
You want to pay your number?
Right in the back, sure.
That's.
Yeah.
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 She said that.
She said.
You don't have to have a word session. Just turn the mic and go, "Messages from the Senate."
Messages from the Senate.
Clerk will report the message.
Clerk will report the message.
Message from the Senate, Mr. Speaker, I hereby announce the passage by the Senate of the following Senate file, herewith transmitted, Senate File Number Three, An Act Relating to Labor Standards, a message to sign Cal R. Ludeman, Secretary of the Senate.
First reading Senate. First reading Senate files.
First reading Senate File Number Three, An Act Relating to Labor Standards. Pursuant to Article Four, Section Nineteen of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Garofalo moves that the rule therein be suspended and an urgency be declared, and that the rules of the House be so far suspended, so that Senate File Number Three be given its second, third readings and be placed upon its final passage.
A call upon the member from Dakota, Representative Garofalo, to explain the motion.
Mr. Speaker, that is my motion.
Clerk will give the bill, it's third, second reading.
Second reading, Senate File Number Three.
Second reading. Discussion. Seeing none?
Mr. Speaker?
Representative Hortman.
Are there any amendments at the desk?
There are no amendments at the desk.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, we were planning to speak on third reading, is my understanding.
Clerk will give the bill, it's third reading.
Third reading, Senate File Number Three.
Third reading. Member from Dakota, Representative Garofalo.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker and members, uh, this is a uniform state labor standards bill with some other provisions added to it. Uh, Mr. Speaker and members, I know very often, uh, we give thanks to our nonpartisan staff for their long hours of work, and we stand up and cheer and applaud them, but I can tell you, the best thing we can do today, uh, the best gift we can give the members of the nonpartisan staff is the gift of brevity. Everyone knows what's in this bill, everyone knows how the governor's gonna take action on it. Uh, I would ask members to vote consistent with their conscience, thank you.
Member from Ramsey, Representative Mahoney.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members, uh, yes, as Representative Garofalo indicated, we all know where this bill is heading. But as we all know here, we love to say something at least four or five times. Especially if the bill hasn't changed. But this bill actually has changed. I carried the, uh, the, the wage theft bill that, um, I worked with over the summer with, over the interim with the governor, and, uh, didn't get a hearing on that particular bill. And it's been a particular passion of mine, as people have, uh, probably witnessed either in the committee or on the House floor. So I know this bill, and when I looked at it and saw the wage theft piece that was coming, I saw that you used the Senate language from Senator Miller. I'm not entirely sure, let me get my bingo card out here. I'm not insure, entirely sure what your priorities are here, when it comes to protecting workers and their wages. But what this bill does, is it flips on its head the current wage theft laws. In this bill, you've got, the department has to prove intent. It has to prove intent. And an intent to fraud. And it has to use clear and convincing evidence. Remember, members, I've spoken to this on the floor, forty thousand people a year, that the department helps. In two pages on this bill, two hundred pages of the bill, in just two pages, you are, you are removing the ability for almost twenty thousand people to recover money, by including intent, intent to defraud, and clear and convincing evidence. As the department's lawyers over at the Department of Labor and Industry said, they have just made it almost impossible for us to enforce wage thefts. So if you vote for this, you are making it almost impossible for the department to, um, to, to prosecute wage theft and get millions of dollars back for families. Now, it may not seem like much, most of the wages that they get back are four hundred dollars. Probably less than what most people pay for proper, uh, parking tickets. Well, many people pay, I'm pretty stingy, I try to go a long ways and I don't wanna get, I'll walk a long ways in order to get free parking. So, members, that's one piece- Ninety-nine and a half percent, maybe even higher. But that's still, over forty thousand people are charged with wage theft or caught on wage theft in a year. Forty thousand people get money stolen from them, typically about four hundred dollars. The other piece is preemption. I mean, I, I'm, I'm just kind of, I'm kinda laughing at this, at this point, um, you know, if you really wanna control that much, this is Minnesota, we're the land of ten thousand treatment centers, you can find something to get over your issues of control and manipulation of municipalities, cities, and counties. So if Representative Garofalo wants, uh, is, is doing the bidding of this caucus, or he truly believes this, and although I think it's really Representative Garofalo truly believes that, he needs to, um, control what cities and counties and townships do within their own districts and their own areas, there is some help. He just needs to admit it. Members, I could go on with that, we've done this, had this wage, uh, the, the preemption issue, and I know there's a number of other people that wanna speak to it, uh, I'm not that much of an expert on the pensions, so I'll leave that up to others. But don't make it diff, more difficult. We should not be, ever make it more difficult for people to recover the wages that are stolen from them. And I would think that we should not make it more difficult for cities and municipalities and counties to put in ordinances or ideas on what the people that live in their town, their city, or their county wanna do. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I'll be voting no on this particular bill.
The member from St. Louis, Representative Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, um, I'll be brief, but I do feel like I do need to speak to this as a working mom, and someone who's benefited from paid family leave and from earned sick and safe time myself. I've got the dreaded call as you sit down at your desk at work, and you get the call that your daughter's temperature has risen to a place that you need to come and get her. Um, that's a terrible call, but thankfully I can leave knowing my paycheck is safe. Um, I have met people in my district who don't have that, who don't have the ability to have to make that tough decision, knowing that their financial security won't be jeopardized. And, but I think this bill, what we have in front of us, is actually more than that. It's not about my daughter, it's about pitting working moms and working families against each other. To say there isn't enough for all of us. Well, there is enough for all of us. It's the choices we make here that really, that we have to put these false choices to say, we're gonna take away earned sick and safe time from a hundred and fifty thousand and people in our state, or we're not gonna make sure that people can have, uh, paid family leave. That's a false choice that's set up intentionally to divide us. That doesn't work for our state. I don't want another working mom to not have something I have, or to take away, or to be told that something I do, or that we do here, is gonna have a detrimental, detrimental impact on her life. There is enough for all of us, these are false choices we're making in this bill, and I'm gonna vote no.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Teason. The member from Hennepin, Representative Dean R.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members, I wanna speak specifically to Article twenty-two, um, and I just wanna say it's, it's really fascinating how some of these particular sections of this bill make it in. I know that, you know, we had a standalone bill around preemption, um, I know that pretty much, you know, all the folks on your side voted for it. Uh, clearly, I'm not a hundred percent sure that you all really have considered all of it, as I look at subdivision two, and actually second, section D, I wanna read it for you, so you understand what you're voting on. It says, "A local government must not adopt, enforce, or administer an ordinance, local resolution, or local policy requiring an employer to provide an employee, uh, particular benefits or terms of employment." So that means, well, there's an exception for government, 'cause we get to do whatever we want, 'cause we write the rules. But you're telling all your local jurisdictions that they can't pass things related to the employers that are in your areas. Now, over the past several months, I've heard Representative Fabian on the radio or on the floor, talking about it's not state government's job to tell local jurisdictions what they can and cannot do, and just the other day, Representative Haley got up and said the same thing. It's not our job to tell these local jurisdictions what they can and cannot do. But yet, here we are, in this bill, doing exactly that. We're doing exactly that, we're telling local jurisdictions what they can and cannot do. And I would think this would be really an interesting section, if this was all coming from you. But I think we know where it comes from. It comes from large corporations, it comes from special interests, individuals that are trying to control what local ordinances are trying to do to help the people that work and live in their cities be able to get by. When I spoke about this originally, I asked a few of you if you knew what the rent of, the average rent of an apartment was in your cities. You didn't know. And it probably wasn't until I told you, that the rent for an average apartment in Minneapolis is twice what the rent is for many areas in rural Minnesota. And I think that that's something that should be in, taken into consideration, and this isn't going in effect from today moving forward. You actually had the audacity to go back to January first in two thousand and sixteen to undo what has already been done in probably not just Minneapolis, but other cities in our state. And it really sort of makes me wonder what it is we're doing here. I mean, are we here to serve the people of Minnesota? Or are we here to serve the people that give us big donations and help us to win elections? And we've gotten to a point that, do we really need, even need to show up here? Might we just have a big pool and a place where those people with corporate interests can put their money, and then where the regular people of Minnesota can put their money, and then we'll just compare 'em? And whichever one is busy, we'll let them control what we do here. I think we need to think long and hard about voting on this bill, I think we need to think long and hard about what we're doing here, and I would ask members to vote no.
The member from Dakota, Representative May Quaid.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members, um, I've spoken on this specific, uh, issue of preemption a few times, and so I won't belabor the point, but I have to tell you, after all this session and we're in special session, I am just disgusted that we had to declare an urgency to take earned sick and safe time away from a hundred and fifty thousand Minnesotans, sixty-three percent of whom are people of color. Do you have your arms around the achievement gap yet? This is how it happens. This is infuriating to stand in this body, who patchwork. Oh my God, there are people in this state who, if their kid get hand, foot, and mouth disease, and they have to stay home 'cause their kid can't go to daycare, they might not be able to pay rent. Are you serious? This body is supposed to do work for the public good, not the private corporate interests, and that's exactly what this does. And it pits regular Minnesotans against one another for earned sick and safe time, or their own earned money, which is what pensions are. So, I'm obviously voting no on this bill, and I would really seriously urge other folks to think about the waiters, and waitresses, and cashiers, and checkout people, and backroom people, who work all across the state, who want paid family leave. If you don't want the patchwork, do it for the entire state, don't take it away from the people who are able to organize for themselves and get it. I'm a no, thank you.
The member from Ramsey, Representative Becker Finn.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker, uh, so, you all like jobs, right? Good, hard, hard, for hard-working people, uh, good-paying jobs? Jobs and workers, we're talking about the same thing. So don't talk about how much you care about good jobs for your constituents while you do things like this to harm workers.
The member from Blue Earth, Representative Cornish.
Uh, Mr. Speaker and members, I took some more notes. Representative Dean and Quaid, um, special interests, are you kidding me? Does education Minnesota, or unions ring a bell in the back of your mind? The millions and millions they've donated to your campaigns? How hypocritical. Whether it's a union or a business, you still take money the same as we do. There's hardly a contributor on my whole campaign finance, uh, schedule that gives over fifty or a hundred bucks, so that's, that's about as bad as dark of the night, dark of the night, dark of the night. I mean, when you, when you start using things like that. And I'm a big believer in, uh, preemption. Representative Dean, if you wanna come down in my area and make campaign flyers, Tony Cornish, Good Thunder, for preemption, good luck. I'm a real big believer in preemption. And one of the reasons why the gun bills that you and I and Representative Leibel have worked so hard to create, just kidding there, but we have preemption already, and the gun bills, remember that? Preemption, so we don't have a patchwork of different laws in every city and county. And this is a good idea, preemption, so we don't have a patchwork of labor laws in liberal cities like Minneapolis, making up their own things and holding the business hostages, and making them comply. And if they don't, they get a hundred protesters in their front door until they do, and act like they're willing participants. So I'm a big believer in preemption, thank you very much.
The member from Ramsey, Representative Pinto.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members, uh, so just a reminder here, that, uh, working families have come to us, year after year after year, on behalf of a few very simple principles, right? The parents of a newborn should be able to stay home from work with that baby, we even have members of this chamber who've, who've experienced that, many of us. People who are sick should not be at work, right? That's good for us. People who work full-time should be able to make enough to support themselves, certainly their families. These things are better for all of us. So, in response, over this, this time, the Republican majority has said, no, we're not gonna prove that, no votes, not even a hearing. So instead, working families have gone to their local elected officials. They've said, please, help us, help us to be able to take care of our newborns, our sick family members, help us to be able to be healthy ourselves before we go to work, help us so that we can work, when we work full-time, we don't have to rely on a handouts from government or anybody else if we're working full-time. Help us be able to have some dignity in our work lives. And so, when those local elected officials have responded, yes, we will help you, we'll respond to, uh, our local needs and our local community, make our local decisions, the majority again says, no, we're so determined to prevent workers from receiving protections, we're actually gonna prevent independently-elected elected officials from making local decisions to protect local workers. And we do, we need to have uniformity, and that means a uniform lack of protections altogether. And now, how cynical is this? In this labor standards bill, which will be vetoed, the majority is saying that the price of blocking preemption, of letting local elected officials protect workers in their communities, is to take away rights from other workers, among other things, the rights of state employees, who work for us, to have their contracts honored, the right to keep family leave that workers already have, that some in fact are with babies right now, actually perhaps not right now, certainly yesterday and a couple days ago, the right to have a secure retirement. Now again, the state of Minnesota is their boss, which sort of makes each one of us their boss, only sort of, fortunately, but each one of us in a way is their boss. Now, each of you, each of us had a boss, I'd like you to please just think back to the decent bosses you've had in your lives, not, not the great ones, they're good too, but just the ones that weren't awful, the many decent bosses we've had. Is this how any of those decent bosses would treat you? I mean, it's pretty standard these days, that decent-sized employers, even small ones, offer paid family leave. Certainly decent bosses comply with the contracts of their employees, they live up to their commitments, right? And decent bosses certainly don't condition these things on taking away rights from other people, right? They don't play their employees' rights off against other people's rights. Now, many of you employ people outside the legislature, and I certainly hope that you treat your individual employees better than we are treating our collective employees. But just in case, I have a word of warning for people watching this, if you're ever offered a job by someone in the Republican majority, I'd suggest you think very carefully before accepting, and make sure you read the fine print, 'cause this is the low labor standards bill, and we should vote no. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Davney.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, for the last several decades, middle-class families in Minnesota and across the country have been challenged with essentially flat incomes. Rising for the rich, and rising, and rising, and rising. But working in middle-class families have been stretched, and strained, and pressured to make ends meet, because wages have not kept up with the contribution that they make to their employers and to the economy. They've been forced to stretch and juggle and make things work when often they really don't work. And what they, what working in middle-class families are looking for are tools. How can I make my family stronger? How can I make us more resilient? How can I assure that we're stable financially, that we have access to the health care we need, that we have access to the income we need, that we have access to the housing that we need? What are the tools available to my family to make sure that our basic needs are met? In a country like ours, democracy is supposed to be a tool for the populace. And here we see, in Minnesota and across the country, our constituents, middle-class Americans, middle-class Minnesotans, are picking up the tool of democracy and using it for their families. And here we see the majority taking that tool away from working in middle-class Minnesota. Well, members, you're gonna do that today, but the families that I know, the moms and dads in my neighborhood, at my kid's school, in my church, when you threaten their children, when you threaten their family, they respond. They respond with tenacity, they respond with commitment, they respond with their power, and they respond with everything they have. And members, you can turn them down today, but I can assure you, they will be back, and they will be back more powerful than they are now, next time, and the time after that, and the time after that. Mr. Speaker, thank you.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and would Representative Garofalo yield for a question?
He will yield, Representative Nelson.
Representative Garofalo, um, as this has gone through the committee process, all through the session here, I've heard you say multiple times that one of your goals is to, is to make sure that there are labor standards across the state, and that you don't, um, wanna make sure, that wanna make sure that right-to-work laws, right-to-work-for-less laws, don't get put in place county by county or city by city. And Representative Garofalo, I know you said it in the past- the session here, I've heard you say multiple times that one of your goals is to make sure that there are labor standards across the state and that you don't want to make sure that, want to make sure that right-to-work laws, right-to-work-for-less laws don't get put in place county by county or city by city. And Representative Garofalo, I know you said in the past that you oppose those laws. Where in this bill, and can I have assurances that they can't do that because of what the bill says?
Representative Garofalo.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And Representative Nelson, yes, you are correct. I'll cover this in my closing speech. But yes, my intent with this legislation is to have uniform labor standards across the state. As has happened in the state of Kentucky, where counties initiated right-to-work ordinances, whether it's that, whether it's paycheck protection, other labor ordinances which traditionally have been opposed by progressive groups, the intent of this legislation is not somehow just to prevent local municipalities from enacting what is traditionally called progressive ordinances, it's to prevent labor ordinances at a local level, whether they are progressive or conservative in nature.
Representative Nelson.
Well, I'll take your assurance on that. I know the bill has changed since it's come over from the Senate a little bit, so you may not know exactly where it is, but I was asking if you know where it is in the law. But I take your assurances for that, that even though the rest of this and the idea of pitting labor, individual rights of individual counties and cities against pensions that the pension bill that's put in here, I'll take your assurance on that. Thank you.
The member from Lake, Representative Murphy M.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I believe that the four issues that are in this bill, in this special session, should be four independent bills. The issues that are in these bills, in this Senate File Number Three, affects every working person and every citizen in this state. And they deserve complete discussion by the people across the state through the processes that have been set up. In particular, the pensions issue is not the bill that regular session passed and is in the Ways and Means Committee. It is not the bill, Senate File Number Three, today, in session, special session, Part Three. It is not the bill that was discussed in regular session. The House hasn't had any input whatsoever. All of us members have not discussed the pension bill since, well, if you were on Government Operations Committee, you would have had part of it. The Pension Commission, 10 members, or 13, 14 members, equal numbers of senators and House members, have never discussed this pension proposal. This proposal and these other proposals affect the lives of every family and working person and individual in the state of Minnesota. And they discuss, they should be able to ask questions and have us have the answers for those questions. And we don't. In this special session, we don't have the answers for all the questions that our constituents are going to be asked for because of the process that has taken or not taken place in this special session. And those people whose have to explain or have to try to understand the sacrifices that they may have to make because of the changes should be given the correct answers. And the pension part of this is not known. And how are we going to get the information to the people that 134 of us haven't been able to receive? We all know that the pension issue is here, but every single pension plan in the state of Minnesota is in here. And this House of Representatives has never had a floor debate about those questions. This is broken. And Senate File Three, Special Session, cannot make it fixed.
The member from Monaco, Minority Leader Representative Hartman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. I think this is a particularly cruel bill. Not only does this bill have in the first provision a section that takes away wage increases and sick and safe time leave from 150,000 Minnesotans, because the governor has committed to veto it, all the rest of the things that are in the bill won't happen and will hurt people in Minnesota. The second section is the pension bill. There's absolutely no reason to tie the fate of retirees' pensions to the preemption issue. The second part of the bill would ratify the contract for the Minnesota Government Engineers' Council. Those individuals negotiated a contract with their employer. It is in place right now. Under that contract, those individuals have received raises. And because this bill will be vetoed, those raises will be rescinded as soon as the governor vetoes the bill. The fourth section, the bill has purportedly the approval of the Memorandum of Understanding for Paid Parental Leave for state employees. There's 1,000 families who have negotiated for and agreed with their employer to get paid parental leave. And if this bill is vetoed by the governor, they will lose that. And what that will mean is that for people who are out unpaid parental leave right now, they will have to go back to work if they can't afford to use unpaid time off. It's so cruel to put the fate of working people who've worked so hard for these benefits in a bill that's destined to be vetoed. And by doing that, you're denying to the workers of Minnesota who have already negotiated these contracts their rights to have the parental leave that they've negotiated. You know, and I don't stand to give a speech because of what this bill does in a political sense. I rise to give a speech and I passed out a handout because this very nice woman, Jenna Bjork, came down to the state Capitol. She's due to have a baby on May 30th. I just thought it was important for you to have a picture on your desk of a person who you are taking paid parental leave away from. And by putting these things together in this bill, in a bill that the governor has already promised to veto, I also passed out the governor's press statement promising to veto this bill. Thank you, Governor Dayton, for promising to veto this bill. So you know that by tying other things to it that supposedly benefit workers, you know that you're not giving those to workers. And that's what's so cruel about this bill. So I have no problem at all voting no on this bill. And I recommend that other members do the same.
The member from Dakota, Representative Garofalo.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. Couple of points. First of all, I made a comment about this earlier this weekend, or I don't know when it was last week or something. Something we've gotten too bad out on this House floor is making the accusation, and today it happened on both sides of the aisle, that somehow the votes, the way the DFL votes, the way this side of the aisle votes is because of campaign cash. Let me assure the citizens of Minnesota, I'm in my 13th year in the legislature, that doesn't happen here, okay? There is never in my 13 years have I had anyone make that offer to me, have I ever seen about it. I know that the reason why members in the DFL vote the way they do is because they have different positions and different ideas on issues than we do on our side of the aisle, okay? And when we get in a little bit in this hot, white-hot rhetoric, especially now when we're short on sleep, maybe people will believe that hyperbole is fact. Rest assured, citizens of Minnesota, this is not Illinois. This is not California. We do not have that sort of corruption here. Minnesota has been and will remain a clean government state. Putting that issue aside. Second of all, I've been told the governor usually doesn't watch the floor session, so he's probably not watching this, but I will make this offer to him today, is that my understanding is the way this bill's going to get processed and sent to him, he's going to have 14 days to take action on this bill. And rather than immediately vetoing it, I would recommend to the governor the following suggestion. During those 14 days, he convene a group of stakeholders from the employee groups, from the employer groups, from citizens, from elected leaders, to find a way to design a statewide program that works in the area of parental leave across Minnesota. And that program should have a three-pronged test to it. Number one, if you like the current benefits you receive right now, you should be able to keep it. Government shouldn't do, in fear of that. In addition, it should be a voluntary program. If an employee doesn't want to belong to whatever statewide benefit program is set up, no one should force them to do it. And number three, in that program is set up, whatever rules are applied to the private sector should apply to government as well. It's the same principles I laid out at the beginning of session. The governor has a unique opportunity to convene stakeholders over a 14-day window to address this issue in a way that works for all of Minnesotans, not with the hodgepodge and messy ordinances that are happening at a city level. Members, but the governor has stated his commitment to veto this bill, I believe him. Today, I am afforded a luxury that's rarely offered to politicians, and that is I get to say, see, I told you so. Because what's going to happen is if the governor vetoes Page 221, Lines 7 to 20, you are unleashing the conflicts of labor policy in our local units of government. So what happens when the first city in Minnesota passes an ordinance to go to right-to-work? What happens when the first city in Minnesota passes an ordinance to enact paycheck protection, to eliminate the ability of unions to take paychecks from, take money, the dues from paychecks beforehand, but instead take them after the fact? Other states, this has happened, there's been a 35% reduction in union membership. In right-to-work states, even more dramatic membership. So keep your eyes and ears open. I tried to do my best with this. For some reason, members on the other side of the aisle viewed this as only a progressive labor policy preemption bill. It wasn't. It was uniform, and now you're going to reap what you sow. Members, please vote consistently with your conscience.
Mr. Speaker?
Representative Pinto.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move a call of the House.
Call of the House being requested. Seeing 10 hands, there will be a call of the House. Clerk will take the roll. Representative Peppin.
Mr. Speaker, I move that further proceedings under the roll call be dispensed with and that the sergeant-at-arms be instructed to bring in the absent members.
Representative Peppin moves that further proceedings under the roll call be dispensed with and that the sergeant-at-arms be instructed to bring in the absent members. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Clerk will close the roll and sergeant-at-arms will bring in the absent members. Clerk will close the roll, and sergeant-at-arms will bring in the absent members. Clerk will take the roll. Members, the House is under call. Please vote. The clerk will call the absentees. Fisher, Fisher, Fisher.
Mr. Speaker, I'd like to rise under 2.05, where I must declare my reason for not voting.
Representative Fisher, state your reasons for not voting.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The way this bill is put together, it violates basic values that we as Minnesotans hold. It also violates basic values in my faith, the Holy Roman Catholic Church, where there are seven themes of social justice. This bill is designed in such a way that no matter how I vote for it, it will violate at least four of these themes. The first theme being family and community participation. In it, it teaches together seeking the common good and well-being, especially of the poor and vulnerable. This bill would nullify a community's efforts to improve conditions for the working poor to break out of the chains of poverty. Second theme, dignity of work and the rights of workers. This bill unfairly pits fairly negotiated labor contracts against social contracts created in the good faith of local communities, dehumanizing everybody in the process. Number three, one of the themes of social justice is creating options for the poor and vulnerable to be put first. Preemption violates us by taking away the rights and the paths out of poverty for those in our local communities who have figured out ways to try to make this happen. And finally, there is the theme of solidarity. We are one human family. This bill divides us and pits us against one another. It pits a mother who's just given birth against a homeless youth, homeless youth trying to break out of poverty. The virtue of solidarity is the pursuit of peace and justice. People say when there is no peace, when there is no justice, there is no peace. Pope Paul VI said, "If you want peace, work for justice." This morning, we said the Pledge of Allegiance, and it ended with the words, "And justice for all." Pitting one Minnesotan against another, such as a mother against a child, against a homeless youth, is not justice for all. It also violates basic values that we as Minnesotans hold. This bill would force me to do that. So in the name of basic human principles, basic Minnesotan values, my Christian social teachings, and in the name of justice for all, I will not play the game to divide, and I will not vote on this bill.
Question before the members from the speakers' rostrum is, shall the members, for the reasons stated, be excused from voting? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Representative Fisher is excused from voting. The clerk will close the roll. There being 75 lives, 48 names, the bill is passed and its title agreed to. Majority Leader Peppin.
Mr. Speaker, I move a recess to the call of the chair.
Majority Leader Peppin makes a motion to recess to the call of the chair. Representative Hortman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Would Majority Leader Peppin yield for a question?
She will. Representative Hortman.
Same question as almost always. Do you have any idea how long this recess will be?
Representative Peppin.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And Representative Hortman, no, it depends on the Senate when they send us additional bills.
Well, we'll hope that the Senate is expeditious then. Thank you.
Representative Peppin makes a motion to the call, recess to the call of the chair. All those in favor, sing my by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion prevails, and the House stands in recess.